Good evening. It's 7:00 and I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. In accordance with the requirements of the open-meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast at a later date over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. This meeting will be broadcast at a later date through the local access cable channel and on the public access Facebook page and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To join this meeting, if you cannot attend in person, please click on the following link. You need to go to Zoom. The meeting ID number is 858-054-15333. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and those that are reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open-meeting law. So could we please all rise to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as a Chair's report this evening, I will say that we are giving this hybrid model over Zoom and in-person a try. We have one of our members who is participating over Zoom. We have one member we anticipate will not attend the meeting and one member who is coming in a little bit late. So our attendance is a little unusual, so we may be skipping around to avoid votes until we have a quorum present in the room. So we will then begin with public comment and our public comment is any topic that is on the agenda. And seeing no public comment, we will continue. The next item is to review and approve the minutes. We are going to skip over this item this evening as there is a change that we didn't have time to make in the minutes. So now we are on line item transfers. We are going to delay this until we have enough members present to make a quorum. So now we need the superintendent's report. That was fast.
Well, I'll turn it over to our students representing us for their report first. It was not an item on the agenda. We weren't sure that we would have students here, but we do, so I'll turn it over to Sean.
All right, I'm going to start with the high school notes. The first two weeks of school went very well. Many of the upperclassmen have been very helpful to underclassmen who are struggling to find their classes, understand the lunch schedules, et cetera. Homecoming season is just around the corner and students are getting excited. Though we will not be having a rally for homecoming, we are all happy to at least get to build our class clothes. The seniors just picked their cloak theme, which is Phineas and Ferb, and soon the seniors will be assigned on their theme. On Friday, the 10th of September, our Blue Knights had their first football game with an outstanding win of 53 to nothing. Students are getting excited for the beginning of fall sports season and that we can now attend games. That's the high school notes. I'm going to go to the middle school notes now. The library is finally open after being closed last school year due to COVID procedures. Now students can freely expand their knowledge, find resources for school projects, or just find a good read. That is it for middle school notes on the elementary school. The results for Penny Wars so far are out, a total of $1,620.78 just within the past two days. The Penny Wars competition lasts till Friday, the 17th. That is it for elementary school and last but not least is the primary school. Primary school had open house for grades pre-K through second, which happened Tuesday, the 14th, which is yesterday. That is all.
All right. Thank you very much. Do you know what the date is for homecoming?
Uh, we are not sure yet.
It's the, uh, October 23rd.
All right, great.
It's at 2:00 p.m., football games. I know the way it's not a football game.
Sure. Thank you very much and thanks for joining us, Sean. We're very glad to have you. Dr. Burnham?
All right, so this evening I'm going to give you an update on transportation. We are still having new students register for the Lunenburg Public Schools. We have been working with D-Bus to get the new students, if eligible for transportation, placed on a bus quickly. We do still have a short waitlist, five on the waitlist as of yesterday afternoon, all of those students living less than a mile and a half from school. D asked its drivers to take counts for their AM and PM bus routes on Monday and Tuesday. We hope to have the compiled data from the bus company tomorrow and this data will help us to know how many seats are available or possibly could be available on each bus. We are really hopeful that we'll be able to place the five on the waitlist by the end of the week.
Great.
An update on our IT department. With the resignation of our IT director, we have brought in a consultant to conduct a needs assessment for the district. The same company has conducted an assessment for the town. We will likely be contracting with this company to fulfill the functions of the IT director for the remainder of the year. And I told you I'd keep you updated on COVID regarding cases. The dashboard is current as of last Friday. The first week of school, we had five positive cases. The second week of school, we had four cases and this week already we have six positive cases. Right now, the state has a positivity rate of 2.4 as of today and Lunenburg is at 7.15%. Right now, the data we have regarding student vaccinations, the 12 to 15-year-olds are at 65% vaccinated, the 16 through 19-year-olds, 73%, and that really spans our grade seven through 12. And our test-in-state COVID testing program, we have been assigned a coordinator. However, the coordinator has to do a site visit and approve the site before we can begin testing. At this time, we still do not have a date for the site visit. We do have the test kits.
Oh, good.
We were told that the staff, the plan was the staff will be provided through the state. However, the state is having difficulty securing the staff and we have now been encouraged by DESI to try to hire staff globally for the test-in-state program. So we will be moving forward to fill the nurse and clerk positions they previously approved. And that's all I have to say.
Well, I'm glad that the kits are here because the news has been all about that there isn't enough kits and there isn't enough materials. So that's a step in the right direction.
And at least at this time we don't have to have the National Guard driving buses in this area. So far, so good.
So far, so good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so on to new business, back-to-school update.
So I invite the principals to come to the table.
Thanks you for having us here tonight to kind of report out on our first day of school. We'd like to, during our virtual school committee meetings last year, we reported out as all three principals at the same time, so we kind of wanted to keep that tradition and continue with that. I'll report out for the middle school and the high school. Our first day went very smoothly. It was wonderful to see students back from summer vacation, but also some students back that had been remote learning for almost 16 months back in the building. We were prepared for them with our additional staff and guidance and in our social workers. We were able to greet kids at the door. We did postpone a couple of larger gatherings, like grade level meetings at the high school. We kind of put a postpone on those just until maybe numbers go down a little bit. Overall, a very positive experience for everybody. I thought it went very well.
Good evening. Hey, Jean-Henri for Turkey Hill Elementary School. We too had a successful start to the school year. All of our third graders actually were invited the Friday before the first day to come in for a tour because they didn't have the move-up day opportunity back in the spring. So we had quite a few students attend, you know, for cookies and juice and walk around the building, but the first day of school, they were greeted in the cafeteria by their teachers. We also had that additional staff, that, you know, social worker, school psychologist who were able to help guide children in the right direction. We did meet by grade level in the cafeteria. Our cafeteria is now set up with Plexiglas at every table, so I wanted the children to kind of have the opportunity to see that as well and understand the six-foot rule. So they did come in, one each day, grade five first and then the next day, grade four and the next day, grade three. So, good start.
Good evening. Chat out to the primary school. We were very fortunate to have two first days. The first one would be for grades one and grades two. Went very well. And, you know, even for the students who were fully remote last year, there didn't seem to be any concerns or glitches getting into the building, finding classrooms. We also had two tour days over the summer as well as the kindergarten social over the summer, so families and students were able to come in and do the building and walk around and ask questions. You know, again, the first two days, a lot of routines, things were going well. Things got picked up really quickly by a lot of our students and really proud of our first and second graders. Kindergarteners, it moved right along, so it was very successful. We had all, our social worker was out meeting children. I think she asked me, you know, what do you want me to do today? I'm like, I'll greet the children. And then anybody who was available to help out in the morning time for around, this was, was out there helping kids.
Great. Any questions?
No, I certainly don't. No, I, it's just, Angie, I know you're doing a wonderful job, but I have experience with you two with my kids and they are raving about how great this year has started off, so, well done.
Wonderful. Sophie on the Zoom, do you have any questions? No? Alrighty. Well, thank you very much. It sounds like a very positive start.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And now we have an extended day update.
Good evening. I'm Katie Capel, direct from Extended Day Early Learning Center and the SEASN program. First, I want to thank you for helping us last month cast, you know, the numbers because we're still dealing with some staff issues, but we're doing really well. So our numbers currently, we're arranging in the morning from 52 to 57 consistently every day and in the afternoon from 60 to 71. The kids are doing great with, you know, we've had a few hiccups. We have some staff out with one who's in quarantine right now and a few other staff actually that have some other illnesses. So it's, we're doing, you know, a lot of recruiting of the high school kids and we are getting a few more. It's really, it really depending on what their fall schedule is with sports. That's what, that's what we're trying to get through the fall sports and hopefully we can, we can grab some. The kids seem to be doing really well. The parents are great. We are, we're following policy, we're following protocol for COVID and it's going really well. Our early learning program, we are down. We still have some swats open in the morning. We have between six and nine students and in the afternoon, we have between three and six students. So we do have more openings. We can take up to 12 students morning and afternoon. And we have five students that carry over from morning through the afternoon into the full-day session. So it's, and staff right for the year is perfect. We have two staff, two to 12 ratio, so we have the staff. We are in line with curriculum, with the pre-K and the kindergarten to make sure that we're doing a lot of stuff to get the kids ready for school and that's going really well.
Great. Sounds good. Any questions? I'm glad your staffing issues are coming along and you were able to find some high school students that are willing to help and...
It's a great team. Unbelievable people that work at that program, so very fortunate to have such a great team.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Okay, the capital plan. Mr. Londa?
Good evening. I'm John Londa, Director of Facilities. So we are hoping for submission to the capital plan for the school department. Our current capital plan, it was a 10-year look at the variety of needs that the school department has. I'd like to start by just kind of focusing on the work that we have just completed and some of the work that is still pending. So in FY '22, the capital plan, we were able to fund a Turkey Hill Elementary School envelope repair project, which replaced a lot of the fascias on the first floor and which is, which were badly needed and will help keep the worst out of the building. That project is complete and came in under budget, so it was about $7,000 that did not get used and that whole went back to the town. We also had, that was the one capital project that we did get funded. We had also a capital project that was funded by the school department out of budget in FY '21 and that was the fire alarm replacement project at Lunenburg Primary School. And that project, the school department funded a part of it. We had $25,000 from the state and at New York. We led a contract with Norrell Service Company to do the replacement. They ordered materials and we tend to try to do that project this summer. They have not, they have just recently, like just this week, got it in, the last of the ones they need. So we're just really kind of getting this project started from the perspective, they probably have the materials they need. This is not a project they can do pieces of, they have to do it all at one time because it's the fire alarm panel and then all the addressable devices that connect to that fire alarm panel, so it's, all has to done at one time. And they can do it that way, but we, right now, when you look at our school calendar, the only open days we have between now and December are really holidays. So we are, we are meeting with, I am going to meet with representatives from Norrell next Wednesday. We're going to do some preliminary walks through the building, make sure they have everything accounted for. And then they will do some work back at their, at their warehouse with some of the programming and things like that that they need to put together, that they do offsite. But we, so we're going to be continuing to push them to identify a date in December to try to get this project scheduled and get completed. So that's where we stand on FY '21 out-of-budget capital project.
Mr. Londa, could I just ask, how many days do they predict it will take to change the fire alarm system over?
So they would try to bring a big enough crew to do it in one day because they really don't want the building sitting without fire protection.
Right, right.
Yeah, so they might, they might bring in a crew of eight to 10, you know, just bloods. But they're essentially touching every, every room throughout the school and that might include every closet in the school. There's a lot of detectors, nearly 200 smoke detectors, pulse stations, heat detectors and other things that monitor some aspects of the, of the building. But these are all things that can initiate an alarm, so that's the parts that we're replacing. The parts such as the horns and strobes that most folks recognize as being, oh, this is the fire alarm system, all of that notification side of things are staying.
Oh, good.
And that's, and that's fine because those, those are not proprietary to Faraday, which is, the current system is a Faraday system. So that, that's what it'll look like. So it should be one day with a large crew moving through the entire building.
Thank you.
And there are some things that like they have to get into the gymnasium. They have smoke detectors that are really up at, you know, 24 feet highs and they have to lift for some, some places like the gym.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the capital plan FY '23 through FY '32, the broad strokes on this is it continues to look a lot like what things do we need to do now and then what things are going to be associated with Turkey Hill Elementary School that will either be, you know, a large-scale renovation project or replacement project. So in near term, the things we're looking at have to do with replacement of some of the district's trucks and keep grounds equipments in the yard. And then there were some other things that we know that can be done outside of a, outside of a renovation for Turkey Hill. And then, so we do have this project that was in our FY '22 plan, which was the Lunenburg Primary School Air Conditioning Project. And this was a project that last year we carried this $290,000. It's reflected, it's still reflected as $290,000 in the document you have about the capital plan. We had just gotten in this week a preliminary estimate from the, from DeGiorgio Associates. This is an engineering firm that the town is using for the Passios redevelopment work. So we have them also as a contractor for us on this project. They had initial $10,000 to come up with a preliminary scope to identify what things needed to be added and to, you know, work on the cost estimate. So we did get a cost estimates this week. I got one on the mechanical side and one on the electrical side. Together, they totaled $281,383 and that was without any contingency added in. So if we just assume a 5% contingency, we'd be at around $295,000, which is in the range of what we had the last year. However, by looking at their cost estimates, it's my opinion that this project is going to be coming substantially under that. And so I, we'll be going back and forth with the engineers trying to bring this number down into the 200,000, maybe to $215,000 range. So we'll be working with them over the next couple of weeks before this plan gets to capital plan to try to tighten up that number. Currently, most of what, why I see there being this difference has to do with the electrical service. And in DeGiorgio, when they did this, the electrical engineer had assumed putting in new, some new panels, running some new services and we're going to push them on that that says, look, we have, we do have some electrical capability that was built into the school and we're going to want them to utilize that.
Sure.
So that will become one of the drivers on the plan, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's bad for us. As I said, I think there's at least $80,000 tied up in trying to add a new panel and running new, new service to a new location, getting new breakers when we do have some of this in-house. So we'll be back and forth on the cost estimate and to try to cut this number down to something that will be probably eat better, better approach with the capital plan than the $290,000 was, but also we want something that's going to be realistic, that gets installed, could get installed and when funded would be a good quality project. So there's still some more work to be done with the engineers to try to get to that point, but as of, as of today, I'm still carrying that $290,000 and I think that will probably shrink closer to $200,000. So the other two projects that I proposed for FY '23 was a replacement of a one-ton dump truck with a plow at $58,833. So we have a one-ton dump truck with plow currently, so this would be a swap out of that, so that vehicle would leave inventory, this would replace it. This is one of the prime movers used for snow removal and what we're likely would do is try to make that more of a grounds vehicle for snow removal and grounds care and then look in subsequent years to bring a second pickup truck in for the mains team. So that, I refer reflected that in FY '25, but that I think is, I would say that this would be our second priority, you know, complete the primary school air conditioning and then replace the one-ton dump truck. The third project that I'm proposing is a replacement for the school's Toro mower. So we currently have a Toro mower literally bought in 2000, so we're at 21 years on that, on that vehicle. It's a great vehicle, however, at 21 years old, the problem we're getting is, oh, we don't get those parts and no longer available. So that, that vehicle, so it was a Toro tractor, had a 10-and-a-half-inch mowing deck, or 10, I'm sorry, 10-and-a-half-feet foot mowing deck, so wide mower deck. We're proposing to replace that with an X-Mark 96-inch deck. So not as big, but certainly is capable, I think. It would be more along the lines of a zero-turn mower. So we think a little bit of mobility will probably help to compensate for a little bit shorter depth. And we, and we have an estimate of that for $45,000 from a contract, from a contract on a statewide contract for, for grounds equipment. So those are the three things that we're recommending for FY '23. Some of the other things that we did is I did move, compared to last year's plan, we had Turkey Hill, we're doing two projects at $50,000 each for floor tiles. I combined them and just put them all in FY '24. And some of what drives that is the fact that the primary school air conditioning project didn't go.
Right.
So, you know, we're bringing this project in. I think one of the things that we really, one of that we have to do with the capital plan is really ensure we drive home the point of how important the air conditioning is for the primary school. I was talking with a, with a parent earlier this week, he had three kids go through and he immediately knew that, yeah, so we need this. And it's, it's all about comfort, that you can knock the temperature down, you can strip out the humidity in the air, students will be more comfortable in their classroom and, you know, and then, you know, most, most of the year, we'll probably not run the air conditioning, but we definitely need it in late August and all throughout September, even into early October at times. And we would, and we would find it burning also probably in early April, all of May, all of June, whenever we have school in session. So I think it's a, it's an important project from a, from a comfort standpoint for both the students and the staff. And that will be one of the points we want to try to drive home.
Sure. Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Londa? Anything?
I did have a question about the, the replacement vehicles. So as we replace these vehicles, do these vehicles get sent back to the town for use? Are they auctioned off or sold?
So what we, what we have been doing is sending it back to the town. More recently, the town has asked us to use Minisi bit and so we, we did that with some vehicles and some other equipment and, you know, had some pretty good results with that. So we did get rid of, three or four years ago, one of the old driverhead vehicles and, you know, sold for $2,500, which was a lot more than I expected.
And does the, the school get that money back or is that going back to the town?
So anything we sell, anything that we sell essentially goes back to the general fund and that's everything is, you know, it's pretty much, not been appropriated, they can't keep it, so it comes back.
No, I think it's a great idea. I think we should continue sending it out as soon as we get those vehicles off. I've seen in the past where vehicles have been sitting for a while, not necessarily the school vehicles, but the town vehicles, and they, they don't get the value that we could get for them.
Yeah, the town manager hasn't been, as I said, hasn't been encouraging us to use Minisi bit.
Great.
And so it seems to be a pretty good vehicle, they'll get things out there into the marketplace.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Londa. Okay, thank you, Mr. Landa. Maybe we should go back to the item that we missed, which was to review and approve a line item transfer. Thank you.
In front of the school committee tonight is a $600 and $92.80 transfer at Turkey Hill Elementary School. This is for an additional supplemental purchase related to a recent Phoenix purchase in the springtime. This is additional information in the description. The surplus money is from the textbook account, which we will get reduced pricing from our original bid for some of those products going to our preliminary budgets. Cost of the investment down. Any questions?
No, I don't think I have any questions. Anybody else? All right, then, do I have a motion to approve the line item transfer?
I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfer brought before by Mr. Cassidy.
I second the motion.
And then, do we have to roll call votes since Ms. Shapiro is on Zoom? I assume so.
Please start with Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Keeley?
Yes.
Okay. So now we'll move back to our discussion grouping with the fall athletic report. Mr. Benel?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me. In front of you, you should have the participation numbers for this fall, as well as the information that I sent out to the parents and student athletes regarding the things that were happening within the athletic department. This fall, COVID update and basically all the important stuff that seems to be going on. Participation is great. I put the numbers from 2019 on the poll because I felt they were more relevant to see because we actually had a full season then as opposed to last year. And you can see there's been a decrease pretty much in all the sports across the board. And yeah, I can't say how impressed I am with just seeing our kids at our practice up here and how well they're doing and how much they're enjoying it. I mean, there's a bunch of kids sitting here right now, the field hockey teams, 3-1, they just won today. Boys soccer and girls soccer, I think tomorrow night, but they're doing well. Cross country, they just won their first team. Football, they had a great win on Friday. Things are going really well for the teams. The iteration of the packet was more, like I said, to keep people up to date because there was a lot of different changes within the scheduling system coming from the MIAA. They partnered with a new site to manage schedules. It's still got its kinks and we're trying to work them out as best we can. It's not, I'm not used to, it's not like fully functional yet. They're still adding and making, people have been making suggestions to update and make it more efficient for the schools to use. So there is those little bumps, but eventually they'll be getting worked out. There's a new communication app that the entire athletic department is using for the teams, athletes, and parents to communicate to each other. It's called SportsU. Each coach, basically, it's almost if you were to put Google and Facebook together just for sports. It's a free service and the coaches and the athletes and the parents are, they're using it to their fullest for communication purposes. It's turning out to be really well. I've got a lot of good compliments from people that have, that have used it and are enjoying it. The new pixel lock cameras that are out at Turfield, the one in the gym. The one in the gym hasn't been used yet, but the one in Turfield has for supply broadcasting of the games. And even more importantly, one of the biggest reasons why I wanted to add those was we're able to receive a copy of the video. And coaches have used them, I know. Girls soccer has used it in the film room down at the field house. Football has, I'm not sure Fieldhouse has yet, but they all, it's, we get that for free. We don't have to pay to do that. And you get a great film quality as opposed to somebody just holding a little camera shaking and moving and trying to track the ball. So that's turned out well. Also, and like I said, everything seems to be going pretty smooth right now athletic-wise, weather permitting. Tonight got really dark really fast, but we were able to get the games in. And I'm very proud of the team and the kids, they're doing really well. Can't say enough for both the hard work and everything that they do. They're following the rules and, you know, they know what's at stake and they do a great job.
Great. Any comments from anybody, questions? Ms. Kelly? Mr. Layton? I thought the idea of broadcasting the games so that like grandma on the West Coast can see them and, you know, that kind of thing, that's a great, great use of technology, really.
And there has, like I said, I know there has been some people from Lunenburg that have, I've seen subscribe to the system. But I was nervous that people wouldn't come anymore. But at the football, the other night, it was, it was houlish that, you know, it was, it was kind of felt like normal again.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you guys for having me.
Okay, the Keystone Collaborative Update.
So I think the most important thing to update everyone on is be enrollment, follow the programs at the Keystone Collaborative. They're actually exceeding their projected enrollment. And they are still in search of a property to purchase. Currently, they end up renting spaces from districts that have an extra classroom here and there. So they're still in pursuit. They have a property that they're looking at in Pittsburgh that wouldn't require too much renovation. So we'll see if that turns out well.
And their staffing is fine even though they've got more kids than they expected? Great. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Next would be the FY '22 Budget Update.
Mr. Cassidy, Business Manager. In front of the school committee tonight is a budget update, FY '21 Budget Update, with a combined FY '22 Budget Update. This is the format that is being presented to you. It is the ordinary budget format that we use as we're moving forward during the budget cycle. This is going to look a little bit different as I report out over the next few months on the FY '22 Budget. But this is just a summary of FY '21 and a summary of the budget that the school committee voted on March 17. The, one thing I want to avert the school committee is that we've got a number of budget items coming forth over the next couple of weeks. One is a significant transfer, which I think I've reconciled today, that includes the dissemination of the salary reserve fund, the $272,000 that's in the FY '22 Budget that's being allocated to all the collective bargaining position increases that we recently settled. So it is going to be, it's, my intent is to release that to the school committee as soon as the online folder is established. If you have any questions, you can review it and just so you're a little bit more prepared. It is, it is going to be pretty significant as far as the number. So I did speak to the superintendent today. There may be some other transfers we may want to do at that time. So we may keep those transfers separate and distinct from the collective bargaining agreement, salary and wages transfers. So we've got, I can't tell you what we're proposing at this time, but we'll keep those separate with a more clear explanation of what we're attempting to do with that transfer. The, this report doesn't reflect, you know, the $700,000 that the school committee got on all the COVID grants over the last year. This is strictly local budget only. And then there are additional $670,000 worth of federal grants that the funds that were expended last year. So it was a very, very busy period of spending. So with that, I'll turn it over to the committee. Do they have any questions?
Sure. And are there any questions?
No.
No, I don't think so. Thank you very much. It says here that we need action, but on your memo it said no action. So are we action? Do we need to formally accept this? Sure.
Accept it as a report in progress.
All right, then, do I have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to accept this as a report in progress.
I second the motion.
And then a roll call vote?
Ms. Shapiro? Yes. Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mrs. O'Keeley?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Now the personnel report.
So this is the biggest personnel report, I think, in our district.
Absolutely.
So besides the number of resignations and some retirements, I'd like to recognize retirements in a moment. We have 33 new people coming into the district. And in addition, another 13 staff members that have shifted into new positions whether to transfer or promotion. What does that mean? That's 46 job postings that the district went through during the spring and the summertime. So with that, where I sit, I would like to thank the principals, the hiring committees, just to expedite these hirings as quickly as possible. And what I acknowledge the school committee too, just because you were aggressive on some of our recommendations as far as posting some positions, especially as they related to the ESSER grants, so thank you. And I want to thank the onboarding team, which involves Liz Peterson, Heidi Spinning, Penny Lorimer, the IT staff, and Nancy Faris at Town Hall. Really helped us out a lot. So there's a lot of moving parts. As I said, I want to, I'd like to acknowledge the retirees at this time. We show you, who would, from a cap worker at the primary school who's been with the district for 19 years. Laura Cooney, the secretary at Turkey Hill Elementary School, had been a secretary for six and a half years at the school. Prior to that, she had some history with, as a paraprofessional in the district. Linda Collette, Lunenburg Middle School, 21 years as a teacher. And Free McCloskey, secretary at our special services office, 23 years with the district. So thank you. Have you seen them? Seen them around town? Unfortunately not. Probably the most important message I want to bring to the committee tonight is that we still do have a few open positions. Some of these positions are recently opened, but I need to report out on the verbally to the committee. The director of facilities and grounds, we're in communications with the finalists.
Oh, great.
So we'll have an update as soon as possible. Our title one-four, there recently recently, our school, we have an open school science colleges position at the primary school. We have multiple paraprofessional positions at the high school and at the primary school. We've got one cafeteria position, part-time position open. Crossing guard position that was approved by the school committee. We're still looking for applicants for that position. Part-time position at Turkey Hill, the secretary, I believe we're interviewing for that position right now, our finalists. We've got an open administrative secretary position at special services office. And our recent resignations from our maintenance department, just this week. We recently posted all of our winter coaches to get a jump on recruiting that group. And as the superintendent reported earlier, it looks like we're moving forward the recently approved position by the school committee, which is the nurse for the test of state in some sort of part-time office position. And publicly, I want to encourage people, this is a good time to get into substitute teaching and for paraprofessionals in teaching, always looking for school nurses. And our extended day program is always looking for a position to be very, very flexible with those hours as well. So I'll turn it over to the committee if you have any questions regarding the report and or the verbal report.
Mr. Cassidy, you left out one person to thank, and that was you. Because I cannot imagine all of these positions and the onboarding and the keeping an eye on it and all the applications. We thank you very much for everything you did to get this all put together.
Great team, great, great team.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes, I wanted to say thank you for the detailed report. It was very detailed. I just want to ask, is there a link on the website that lists all of the available positions right now that we're looking for? How would they find the list out in the public?
Every position that we have available is listed on the school spring.
Okay.
And you could search Lunenburg, Lunenburg Public Schools. You can search specific schools if someone's interested. But every position that I listed today is listed as open in the district. So I encourage people to go, play opportunity, very flexible too.
Has there been in the past postings on the website?
Excuse me?
Has there been in the past postings on the website, on the school website?
No, but that's a potentially good idea.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Our next item is the Lunenburg Police Department. Welcome.
That's my date. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Has everybody had an opportunity to read the policy?
Yes.
I guess at this point, I would open it up to questions. If there's any questions that you need to add, we'll answer.
Do you have any questions?
I didn't have any questions still.
Ms. Shapiro, do you have any questions regarding this?
Ms. Shapiro, do you have any questions?
No. It was very detailed and, you know, it was easy to understand what the...
The policy is right in line with the school and the SRO position. As we move along with police reform... As we move along with police reform and what mandate is going to come forward, we're going to have to redo the MOU between the school and the police department. There's certain mandates that are coming down that are redo by December 31st. And I believe a survey is going to be sent out from the superintendent of the schools association. I've seen the survey. I believe it's going to be available soon to the parents in the districts. And based on that, based on what their law is, that was signed, that bill that was signed in law in December, and also the reform of 2018 with the criminal justice reform, they'll couple that and they'll come up with a newer MOU. This MOU is supposed to be standardized throughout the state. With that being said, certain things may have to change within the policy itself. We've tried to draft this policy to make it, to conform to what the police reform is asking for us today. With that, with that in mind, I'm hoping that there won't be much changes to what we see already. I believe we have a great collaboration between our SRO and the school. As you can see, we're probably the most well-known SRO bank, of course not. And we'd like to continue that collaboration, and that's what it's about. And, you know, moving forward, when changes come about, we'll be back before you know it.
Sounds good. So if no one has any questions about this, this is an action item, so we need to accept the policy. So is there a motion to do so?
Make a motion to accept the policy, LPD, BWC, policy, and SRO, MOU.
I'll second that motion.
And a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shapiro? Yes. Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oshino.
Yes. All right. We thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Feel free to leave Hank.
He's obviously very comfortable here.
Oh, this building is really.
Okay, and we have a donation.
We have received a donation of one trumpet to the music program at the middle high school from the Beal family and former student. I would recommend acceptance.
All right.
I'll make a motion to accept this trumpet from the Beal family.
Second the motion.
And then we need to vote.
Ms. Shapiro? Yes. Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshino?
Yes. Thank you very much to the Beal family. That's much appreciated. So under old business, we have the transportation contract. Mr. Cassidy?
Mr. Cassidy, business manager? So to begin the discussion on this matter, I just want to summarize the presentation at the last school committee meeting, which was really outlined in this memorandum. Next year would be the fourth year of our transportation contract with D-Bus. If, I think, I think it's town, it's in the town bylaws, it was confirmed by the town manager today, this week, that if, if we want to embark on a fourth year on a purchase or a service contract, it needs town approval. And the deadline for articles for the November 16th town meeting is Tuesday, September 28th. So extending the fourth year of the transportation contract needs to be considered to see for us to move forward to get on that warrant. As I expressed my concern at the last meeting, the proposed increase for FY '23 by D-Bus is nine and a half percent. That's a significant increase from previous years, which is 3.45%, 2.75% and 4%. Just based upon some information that I've obtained, the amount is extraordinarily high for, compared to what other districts are paying. Obviously, a 5% increase is considerably high for a lot like it. I'd be recommending that the school committee authorize the administration to rebid the contract. And for evidence of that contract will be presented to the school committee over the next few months, whether we exercise or we propose another three-year with two one-year options, or we just go with a one-year, a three-year contract. That will be up for consideration. We'll look at what other districts are doing and the rates that are coming in. With that extra time, you know, that gives the school committee an option to explore the way we transport children. So, and what I'm trying to figure out is if we need more buses, we need to give the vendor or a vendor enough time to order a bus to get it for the first day of school. So I'm trying to back dates out based upon a delivery of a bus for the start of the school year. So I'm working on, working on those numbers for you, or dates for you. I'll just go back to three years ago when we did this. We bidded in the middle of January, and we opened the bids in the middle of February, and it went in front of the school committee on the first meeting in March. And that's, that's almost a drop dead date anyway, because we need that number for the following budget year. We may be able to go a little bit longer, meaning the next meeting in March. But that might be too late for the vendor to order a bus. So I'm trying to play with dates to keep everyone's options open. But, you know, this may be bid at the end of December or at the beginning of January, right around that time. So I'm not at a point right now to recommend dates. And it's, it's my opinion, the school committee's not in a position to offer guidance on specific transportation changes for the next three years. And I think that's a discussion that we can, we can have. Maybe that's, maybe that's something that, a topic for discussion that can be brought up by the school committee between the school committee and administration over the next few meetings.
Right.
And I know that some of that maybe may involve policy changes as well. So that's going to be a big discussion. But tonight is my recommendation, well, our recommendation to authorize us moving forward on a, on rebidding this transportation service and not doing the fourth year.
Right. So obviously, we know there's been a lot of issues with transportation, and I'm sure that is something that we do want to put on the agenda to discuss. What are the possibilities? And to have some information about the amount of new enrolled students that have been riding the bus and, and these kinds of questions that are causing this bus crunch at this point in time. Because we would be interested in exploring how to, not to speak for everyone, but how to alleviate some of the pressure on the busing system at the moment. Did you want to add anything to?
No, just everything that you just said. I think this is a really good time to take an evaluation of what's going on with the busing situation. We're getting so much input from families, and it just seems like it's the right thing to do to look and see if we can make some changes to help benefit all of the students in the town, not just some of them.
Mr. Layton?
Yeah, I would agree with both of you. I think as a teacher and a coach, I've seen it too at my school, that there is definitely a shortage of bus drivers too. Hopefully, after the fall, maybe things will change to the better, and maybe that'll help, have potential rebid too. I think, I love the idea of rethinking transportation, more buses, more access, looking at that. In that time period of rethinking transportation, I think it would be a great idea to survey parents, even potentially have a committee where we can get parents involved with that committee, so we can get a lot of feedback from them. And then again, I love the idea of reviewing that policy, making sure we're reviewing that as well.
Ms. Shapiro, did you want to make any comment about the transportation?
Uh, no, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
All right. So then we need a motion to authorize, to authorize, to rebid.
I will make a motion to authorize administration to rebid for the transportation services.
I'll second that motion.
And then a roll call vote.
Ms. Shapiro? Yes. Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oshino?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the Massachusetts School Children's Pesticides Act. I didn't know if this man wanted to speak on that anymore, or?
I, I think I presented everything at the last meeting. I just thought if you had any questions, I would be available for you to answer any questions.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
I do, and I don't know if I can direct it to both of you. I guess my confusion lies with when certain pesticides are used in a case of emergency. My biggest, I guess, concern right now is the amount of children in our district who are allergic to bees.
Is, is?
Sorry, the amount of children are allergic to bees in our, in our district, so.
Oh, I don't think it would interfere with treating bees at all.
Okay.
It only changes that all of those regulations are unchanged. What you would use for emergencies.
Okay.
Is unchanged. It would be the same as it was before. It's just that one little section in the law.
Okay.
That says which chemicals, you know, taking out like glyphosate and 24B, which are the worst offenders, I think. But no, for emergency situations, it would be the same.
Okay. And what is considered an emergency situation? Because my understanding with treating for bees is it's kind of a constant?
Yeah. I, I.
I know, sorry to.
Yeah, I, I can't honestly answer that. I think, I think it would just be whatever you've ever done in that situation. I can't imagine that. I mean, that's, that's a very serious situation. Ms. Londa recommended, he talked about it at the last meeting, of like the potential of somebody going up on a roof.
Yes.
And finding a bee's nest in an air conditioner or something. You certainly wouldn't want to tie anybody's hands in that case at all.
Yeah, that's it. Mr. Londa, do you have anything to add with? I know you had sent something over too.
Good evening. So I, they, I put together a letter about that.
Yes.
So the proposed legislation is going to strip out four subpar paragraphs.
Okay.
Our authorization to use chemicals, pesticides, EPA-registered products on school grounds is tied to the paragraphs they're going to remove, as they proposed to remove.
Okay.
The emergency notification links you back to the same section that they're removing. So essentially, it's going to say, you'll be able to use the products that are listed as, I'm going to generally categorize them as botanicals, things like peppermint oil. There's a really long list. I did bring it to mind, but it's essentially a lot of products that are not EPA-registered, but they're, they're natural, naturally occurring products, and that's what you'd be able to use. And I think that's why when I, when I asked about the Central Mass mosquito control project about this, they were kind of, they didn't give me a very clear answer that, you know, oh yeah, well, this is what we can do. So I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. I just know that what this legislation looks like, it really does, it just strips out our ability to use any kind of EPA-registered products.
I, I didn't know. I checked the, the Central Mass mosquito project, control project about another issue because there was, there was another bill related to mosquito spraying and mosquito control. And I asked a toxicologist about it, because they were very concerned about the chemicals that were being used by, out of Western Mass with the, I don't know what they call it, mosquito control out there, or something. And that toxicologist from Western Mass, he looked at our list from Central Mass, and he said, it's not great, but it's not as bad. Like the chemicals that are used in Central Mass for mosquito control are not as bad as the ones that they're using in Western Mass. So I mean, I don't know if that, if that puts your mind at ease, Ms. Londa, or not. I mean, I understand your concern. I think that they're not going to take, I would think that they're not going to take away your ability to deal with something like a bee's nest in a playground or on a roof of a building. That would be, that would be ludicrous. I totally agree with you. That would be a very dangerous situation.
We have used botanicals in the past. We've used peppermint oil sprays. When we did not have a person with a pesticide applicator's license, our only recourse then was to use that. And we bought that for a number of years. And then the suppliers that we kind of relied upon to get that for us stopped carrying those products. We have had a member of the staff that has had a pesticide applicator's license, so they've been able to use the products that were listed on our IPM plan. Unfortunately, that was one of the, one of the people that was, could be leading us.
Um, yeah.
So we may be trying to get back to that if we can find those kinds of products. I, I said, we've looked at some of the largest industrial supply companies that we normally work with, and probably don't carry it. But I think that that's what this does, is that even using peppermint oil, as I said, it's not that that's not effective. Not that I would say it's, you know, it's fairly effective if you can get, get your hands on it.
Yeah. It's hard, because I think we all want to do what's the safest for the kids. I'm just so unfamiliar with this, and I wish I was more knowledgeable. I guess I'm nervous as to what it means for those kids who are allergic, fire ants, all these different things. Like if we don't treat with what we're doing now, are we going to have a bigger issue? That's my concern. But Brian, please take over.
Go ahead.
I, I think it's important to reduce the amount of pesticides. I feel like Ms. Londa and her staff are, are working towards that. They try to reduce the amount of pesticides they use. They have a plan. But there are some areas where they're going to need that, whether it's the mosquitoes, whether it's the bees. So I have concerns of limiting. It seems like this could potentially limit some possibilities, and I feel like it's not as clear as it could be. I feel like there could be some sort of meeting in the middle. I lean towards maybe even having a policy, the policy subcommittee look at policy in regards to promoting more safer actions and pesticides that are limited as a need basis. So I guess my recommendation would be that we, that we pass, that we take no action on the Massachusetts School Children's Pesticides Act H926.
Ms. Shapiro, did you want to add anything to this conversation about the pesticides?
Um, I guess. My only question would be, and I'm sorry, this has been answered, my audio is kind of cutting in and out. I don't have a ton of information about why this is being proposed in the first place, so I guess like, what would be the benefit? Because it seems like, obviously, like we're being recommended to not approve it, so I guess like, what's the flip side of the argument? Do you want me to answer that?
You can address that if you like. You can address that if you like.
So, the bill is proposing not to use toxic chemicals in and around schools that have been shown to be harmful to children. So things that are used, say, to control, to just kill weeds that aren't necessarily hurting anybody, but you can have very harmful effects to children who are being exposed to it, would be banned. It's just, it's one section, it's a very big law. It's MGL 132, I have it written in the notes, I think, I don't remember the exact law. They get it on their clothes, they inhale it, it's, they're much, children are more susceptible because their ratio of surface area to body mass is larger, and so they're further absorbing it more. It has been shown by the American Academy of Pediatrics, increased pediatric cancers. It has been shown to, that some of these chemicals can cause behavioral changes, cognitive changes, and so forth in schoolchildren. And so to get these things away from the school would be beneficial for the health of kids. It's about the kid's health and safety. And obviously, there's other things to weigh in there. I think that the concern about bees is very real and important. I don't know what would be recommended in the place of, you know, if the chemicals that are currently used to control those kinds of emergency situations would be, need to be replaced or not. I don't know about the peppermint oil thing, I'm sorry. I can't speak to that, but, I mean, it's up to you guys. I mean, you have to do what you think is best. There's some real dangers to pesticides in kids, and you have to consider that, and you have to consider what the alternatives are.
Thank you.
And also, I'm just, what we're asking for is an endorsement. It doesn't guarantee that this bill is going to pass at all. It's just, does the Lunenburg School Committee endorse this bill? That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for clearing that up again. I'm sorry if you had to repeat yourself.
No, no problem, no problem, yeah.
Well, I agree with that, thank you.
My concern comes in, I was looking for it, and I finally found it, where it said that they could apply for a waiver. If there's a bee's nest on the playground, you don't have time to apply for a waiver, and that's what this information says you'd have to do. So I have hesitancy around that, because of that. This is sort of like a two-pronged issue, because we can, I believe Mr. Londa and his crew try not to use an exorbitant amount of pesticides. I believe they're very careful about that kind of thing. However, not all kids in Massachusetts have Mr. Londa on their watch. So it's sort of like the Student Opportunity Act, where we knew we weren't going to get a lot of money, but it was good for everybody. So we're waiving that, but, you know, we're weighing that, but I have concerns about the bee's nest, I have to say.
So one of the things that you could consider is, you know, there are school districts, there are more than a dozen school districts in Massachusetts that have switched over to organic products for the things that, for which that is reasonable to do.
Right.
You know, and I guess they're using their same stuff on emergency situations like that. I mean, that would be something that you guys could consider as well.
Yeah. I think I'm leaning like Brian, that maybe this is more of a policy issue for us at this time, but has everyone's questions been answered?
I think so.
Then do we have a motion, whether or not to endorse, to sign the petition and endorse House Bill 926?
So I'll make a motion that we take no action on the Massachusetts School Children Pesticides Act H926.
I will second that motion.
Okay, then we need a roll call vote.
Ms. Shapiro?
Sorry, just to clarify, the motion is that we're not taking action, like, to endorse them?
Yes.
Okay, uh, no.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashenby?
Yes. Okay, we appreciate the effort that you've put in, and I understand it, but we're really nervous about the bees.
I think you brought to light some of them, yeah.
Well, I appreciate also your willingness to look at it as a policy issue.
Yes.
You know, I think that's important, and I think that, you know, just raising awareness and being aware of this as a potential health risk for schoolchildren is important. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Okay.
All right, now we have third reading Policy 3201, Student Activities Account, and Policy 3203.01, Federal Fund Supplement, Not Supplant.
All right, are we ready for this? Because it's going to be a long one. If you want to make a motion, Lily, no? All right, so Fiscal Management and Non-Instructional Operations 3000, Income 3200, Student Activities Accounts 3201. A program of co-curricular activities established by the school committee should provide efficient procedures for their creation, operation, and demise, and should outline a system for the safeguarding, accounting, and internal control of extra classroom activity funds. The funds shall be only for the benefit of students and managed in accordance with sound business practices, which include accepted budgetary accounting and internal control practices. Authorization. In accordance with MGL Chapter 71, Section 47, as amended by Chapter 66 of the Acts of 1996, a school principal may receive monies in connection, or sorry, in connection with the conduct of particular student activities and must deposit said monies via the town treasurer. The raising and expending of activity money by student bodies should have but one purpose: to promote the general welfare, education, and morale of all students through the financing of the normal legitimate co-curricular activities of the student body operation. The superintendent must approve all student activity accounts. Student activity accounts will be established upon the recommendation of students to the building principal. The principal in turn will make a recommendation to the superintendent of schools. The accounts must be specific to a student organization. No discretionary or commingled accounts can be established. An interest-bearing student activity agency account shall be established for the purpose of conducting student activities. All monies received in conjunction with approved student activities will be deposited into such student activity agency account. Each school principal will be provided with a checking account for expenditure purposes only. Funds may not be deposited directly into such accounts. The bank account will be issued via the town treasurer with a branch in Lunenburg. The maximum balance that may be on deposit in the checking account of each primary and elementary school principal is $2,000. The maximum balance that may be on deposit in the checking account of the middle school principal is $5,000, and the maximum balance that may be on deposit in the checking account of the high school principal is $10,000. To the extent that funds are available in the student activity agency account, funds up to the maximum balances set by the school committee will be transferred from the student activity agency account through the warrant process to initially fund each checking account. Periodically, to the extent that funds are available in the agency account, the treasurer will reimburse each checking account through the warrant process to restore the maximum balance. All expenditures with invoices shall be paid by check. In the event that a particular expenditure exceeds either the maximum balance or the amount currently available in the checking account, to the extent that funds are available in the student activity agency account, the treasurer will transfer funds sufficient to cover the expenditure from the agency account to the checking account. No personnel expenses can be charged to the student activity accounts with the sole exception of the business manager of student accounts who may be paid from the interest earned. Signature Authority. Principals and administrative secretaries in each school building must sign all checks and authorizations with an original signature. Signature stamps are not permitted. All checks in the excess of $1,000 maximum must be cosigned by the town treasurer or paid through the town warrant. Graduating Class Funds. Funds held on behalf of graduating classes are to be held within the student activity checking account for the high school. Such funds shall be designated by the class's year of graduation. All year-end fund balances will be maintained with the class year club, slash club. Class year accounts will move to the next school, following the class of students. Upon graduation, the class balance shall be dispersed in accordance with the class vote. If there's no such vote, all funds will be transferred to the Lunenburg Public Schools' gift account and expended by vote of the school committee. Once a class has graduated from high school, their funds should be removed from the high school student activity checking account, no later than two years from the date of graduation. It is the responsibility of the class officers to arrange for these funds to be removed from the high school student activity checking account by making a request to the school committee at a regularly scheduled meeting to approve the transfer of funds to a new account. When requested, and once all outstanding financial obligations of the graduating class have been met, the remaining balance should be removed from the fund by check transfer payable to the class of, said class, checks payable to individual members of the graduating classes are not permitted. This check should be deposited into a new joint bank account opened up by at least two class officers that is designated within the class's year of graduation. This account will be assigned an EIN number that should be communicated to the school secretary for future reference. Class officers should be given a copy of this policy during the course of their senior year to ensure their knowledge of the obligations to perform under this policy. Inactive Student Activities. When a student activity ceases to be active for a period of two fiscal years, the principal or other authorized administrator shall require the following actions. One, obtain written notice from the faculty advisor or student officer that the activity will cease to be a viable account. If unable to obtain such notification, the principal shall request action to close the account from the school committee. Two, identify in writing all assets of the student activity. The disposition of any assets shall be determined by the school committee and may not benefit specific individuals. Three, annually notify all students of the required actions if an activity ceases to exist. Student Activity Deficits. Individual student activity accounts are not permitted to be in a deficit position. Whenever a deficit exists that is not the result of timing, the superintendent shall recommend remedial action to the school committee in a timely manner. Interest Earned. The interest earned by the student activity agency account will be retained by the fund, and the school committee will periodically allocate these funds to purposes as determined by the school committee. The interest earned on each student activity checking account shall remain in the account and be recorded as a separate line item by the building principal. Said interest shall be used to cover the following expenditures without requiring further approval from the school committee. One, to cover the cost of periodic outside audits of the accounts. Two, to purchase forms and supplies relating to maintaining the student activity agency account by the school. Three, to cover the cost of students attending a class or school function when students are charged for such, but the principal determines that family is unable to cover such expenses. Four, refreshments for parents slash student activities and for volunteers who have helped to support student programs. And five, business manager of student accounts. Commissions. Any monies paid to the school or to a student activity organizations as commissions belong to the students. At no time shall such commission be used to benefit staff. Commissions should be spent in support of student clubs and co-curricular activities, source vending machines, yearbooks, class rings, student pictures, or, yeah, to, or, sorry, I'm lost, student pictures, or be deposited to the specific student activity subaccount, example, yearbook or senior class, for use by the student organization. Undesignated Earnings. Should a school have any undesigned earnings, the school must present a plan for the collection and expenditure of such monies to the school committee for approval. This plan must also be stated in the annual report to the school committee or renewal each year. Performance Bonds. The town will ensure that the persons administrating said accounts shall give bond to the town in such amount as the treasurer shall determine to secure the principal's faithful performance of his or her duties in connection with such student activity accounts. Account Reconciliation and Annual Report. An annual report on what the interest was used for shall be filed with the school business manager every August for the prior school year. Monthly account reconciliation will be the responsibility of the principal. The development and oversight of financial practices and procedures will be the responsibility of the school business manager, combined with the town treasurer and accountant. An annual audit of the student activity funds shall be conducted in accordance with the procedures as agreed upon between the school committee and the auditor based on DOE guidelines. A copy of the student activity accounts guidelines can be obtained from the school business manager. Note, DESI audit guidelines for student activity checking accounts require an audit whose timeline is determined by DESI. In regional districts, these accounts may be part of the annual audit by a third-party auditor. In municipal districts, the audits may be conducted by a district or municipal employee, but not by the principal, treasurer, superintendent, or any authorized signatory on the accounts. Districts with large numbers of schools may rotate the schools through the audit process. Source MASC, March 2016, legal reference MGL 7147. Updated and approved, May 25, 2016, and June 20, 2018.
Well done.
Yeah. Brian, you want to take the next one?
So this is DEC, Federal Fund Supplement, Not Supplement Policy. The school district is committed to utilizing federal grant funds to supplement instructional programs funded by local, state, and other sources. Federal funds will be used to complement and extend district-funded programs, not to take the place of supplant programs previously funded by the district. The superintendent or designee will ensure that federal grant funds are dispersed appropriately and that associated record-keeping and reporting complies with required guidelines and mandates. Source MASC, July 2020.
All right, thank you for all that reading. Now we need a motion to approve the policies as read.
I'll make a motion to approve the Policy 3201, Student Activities Account, and Policy 3203.01, Federal Fund Supplement, Not Supplement. I can't read them.
I'll second that motion.
And a roll call vote?
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenby?
Yes. Thank you very much for all the work on those policies. So now we have public comments that are open to any items under the school committee's purview.
Hi.
Hi.
Lisa Lovak, I am the president of the Lunenburg Education Association. I just wanted to give a little back-to-school update from the teachers. It is very nice to be here with you in person. Our teachers feel exactly the same about being back. We are so happy to be back with our students, all of them at the same time. We are very happy to be back with each other. That was also something we were missing. We're really thankful to the work that you've done over the summer, working with all the different groups and making sure that everyone had you back safely and has everything they need. We're very thankful for the Advent team, and particularly to Dr. Burnham and to Mr. Casby, who make it very easy to work together. So it's a great partnership. Things have been really good. I judge my job by how many emails I get, and it's not nearly as much as I did last year. So things really are, things are going well. Just like students head back to school, your teachers did, too. Today, 35 of our educators took a class together, taught by one of our educators, Gail Okerman. And the common thread that I thought was really important was, we reflected on how we felt last year when we took class together, and someone had described it as, they said, in my writing about how school was going, I had a lot of metaphors about drowning. And this year, when we shared, it was all about the hope and excitement and the joy of doing our jobs again. And there's just that feeling in the buildings that we're happy. We're happy to be back doing our jobs, we're happy to be back with each other, and we feel that from our students, no matter the grade, they seem happy as well. I would like to make it a goal, I know it's been a goal of Dr. Burns, to get more of our teachers in here for the meetings, to have them share some of the excellent work that they're doing. So I'm going to try to see if we can make that happen this year. At the class today, they were already throwing out ideas for our projects that we'll work on all year, and working on creating more community connections, working on welcoming students from out of district who join in the upper grades, working on ways we can integrate them more seamlessly into our community. People working on ways to find more movement for our students in all grades, and more SEL opportunities for our students in the upper grades as well. So... So that's exciting work that our teachers are going to be doing. I hope to provide you some updates on that. And I hope to work with you on some other things that you mentioned tonight. We are addressing some of the primary school concerns about heat. We know there's concerns about Turkey Hill, even though we managed to avoid some of that 90-degree weather these first couple of weeks. You know, we have been talking about that and hoping that we can think about how we want to create comfortable climates for our students for optimal learning from the first day of school to the last day of school, no matter what the temperature is. So, um, just thanks and, and there's a little update for that.
Well, thank you. And we thank all of you very much for all your hard work. So reports, Athletic Advisory Committee.
We've not met, our next meeting is in November, the week before Thanksgiving.
All righty. Fincom. The Finance Committee met on August 26th. The Finance Director said that FY '21 was a good year for revenues. The free cash should be up about $800,000 from last year. They have received half of their APF funds, still deciding on how to spend them. The fire chief was there and they will continue their staffing plan. The public safety building is 17 years old. I couldn't believe that, you know, from somebody who's lived in town forever, it, it doesn't seem like 17 years ago. So they're, they're in need of repairs to the HVAC system and such. And he also referenced that they were still waiting for the fire alarm to be replaced at the primary school. And Special Town Meeting, Public Hearing is the 14th of October. They also met on the 9th of September. The town manager reported that the comment letter was assembled and turned into the state concerning the 40B development project. The state closed out with a $4 billion surplus and that what they were planning on doing with that was to replenish the stabilization fund that they had hit during COVID. The library director talked about the recapitating being complete and working on a strategic plan, hoping to provide more user access. And there was a discussion about a hope to move all town departments to the same digital platform. They were talking about seeing the change in the IT department on both the school and town side as an opportunity to make some motion in that area. The Land Use Director is waiting for results from the 2020 census. And on their next meeting, which is the 23rd of September, Dr. Burnham and Mr. Cassidy will be their guests to talk about what's going on in the school department. So that takes care of Finance Committee. PTO? I don't know.
Um, the PTO met on Monday. They approved the June meeting minutes. The treasurer talked about the PTO budget as well as the school gifts for this year. As far as membership goes, the PTO sent an email out to parents saying if anybody's interested. And they're going to be tabling on Monday evening at Cherry Hills, that's super fun. We also talked about social media and future meetings. And the next meeting is going to be October 4th.
Thank you. School Councils, has anyone councils met?
No, mine meets next week.
Primary school is going to meet Monday.
All right. And Capital Planning?
So Capital Planning, we were trying to have our initial meeting. It didn't happen yesterday because there was a lack of form. So we're going to try to meet again next week.
And the Wellness Advisory Committee?
We have not met yet.
Okay. PACSEL?
We have not met.
And the TC Passios Design?
Yes, so we had a meeting last night with the Select Board. Through, through this whole process, we've been working on getting that number for a renovation. So it's at 23.5 million. And it is a very high number. And the concern was that what if it costs, what would the cost be for a, a teardown in a building? So we've been working on that. That's what the, the Springtown Meeting funded to, to pay the architect to do that additional work. The architect has started. It's, uh, it's not as encompassing work because it, it is just a, a rough idea of what it would cost. It's not the full design. So even if it, it did go to that stage, we would still need to fund a, a development and design process. But that, that process is a, 60 days or less, the architect believes he can do it in under 60 days, putting us before town meeting with that number. We don't know when that number is going to come out of what the new build would be for the teardown and new build. But the, the committee feels that we have that 23.5 million and we want to go to the town with the information of what a new build would cost on a teardown and have that, have that decision on the town of what they want to do. So where, we went to the Select Board with some articles, potential articles. So the first article was a presentation. So it would be a presentation about the 23.5 million, also sharing the number that we get for what a teardown and new build would be. The Select Board had no concerns about that article, an update article. The second article would be putting the renovation price tag up for a vote, so the 23.5 million, with again the information from the, the update article. There was concern from the Select Board, two out of the four that were present, that they wanted more time, that it was a very important decision and they had concerns that people might think we're rushing through it to get the number up. The other two wanted to make a decision, not wait another six months to the Springtown Meeting and when we have that information in front of us, what the cost is going to be for the renovation and what a new build number would look like. So they, they didn't have any decision on that. The third article is if, basically only if the second article fails, that if the town decides they don't want to renovate, the third article is about doing a, a design and development of a new building. So there was a little discussion on that, whether it truly should come from the committee or should it be a Select Board decision? Because a lot of talk in town is whether it should even be on that land if we are going to build a new building. So that's where we left it and we plan to meet again with the Select Board. We're also going to meet again with the TCP Committee to discuss our, our direction as well.
Okay.
Hopefully that, that is clear. And, and the hope was also that we got out in the public at a Select Board meeting so people can find out more about it if they're not watching the school committee meeting or the TCP meeting.
I did watch the meeting and there was a lot of good conversation at that time. Okay. So that folds into, I believe, topics for future discussion.
Yes, I didn't know where to put it, whether to talk about it now or talk about it at the TC Passios. So during that, that meeting, Mr. Jeffries asked if I could take back to the school committee to have us have a discussion about providing an opinion on a new build of a town hall or a town building on a property that was close to the schools, like in the TC Passios. Whether, you know, there's a lot of things we could discuss about whether we want a school there, whether we want the town hall there if there is a teardown. Because building a new town hall, there's a lot of discussion. It could be at a different location. So if there's an opinion that we have, we could possibly have that discussion at a future meeting.
Yes. I, I think that makes sense.
Have an official position.
Yeah.
That we should talk about it at the next meeting and then you will have that information to bring back to them.
I think that would agree.
Okay. Any other topics for future discussion?
I think we've talked about it before, but just as we talked tonight about reevaluating the bus situation.
The bus.
And really bringing the policies forward again, maybe, and taking a look at them.
Absolutely. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:39 PM.
I'll second that motion.
Can we roll call?
Sure thing.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archer?
Yes. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.